Okay, I'd like to call to order the Radcliffe City Council Special Call Meeting for Tuesday, September 16th at 4:00 PM. This meeting is being held at Radcliffe City Hall and being streamed live on Facebook. If you can please rise for a invocation and remain standing for a pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for your abundant blessings. Father, we're thankful for our mayor, our city council. We ask that you give them wisdom and guidance in the decisions that they make to move our city ahead. Father, we pray for our country. We pray for our veterans, both here and abroad. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir.
Bell?
Present.
Brown?
Here.
Deroche?
Here.
Merle?
Here.
Owens?
Thompson?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Can we have consideration approval of minutes for August 19th, 2025, regular meeting, September 8th, 2025, Special Call Meeting, September 8th Work Session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for being here. We had to move the meeting to reschedule just to accommodate some folks that needed to be here today. So we appreciate everyone making the time to be here at an earlier time. We have public comments portions at this time. I will open up the floor for public comments. Pete, you want to come up? Just state your name.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Pete Countryman with the Radcliffe Cultural Festival. I'm joined today with my colleagues Councilwoman Toshi Merle and Councilwoman Pam Deroche, who also serve as coordinators for the festival. This Saturday, September 20th, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM, we're proud to present our 7th Annual Cultural Festival. City Parade will be at 5:00 from South Deepwood to City Hall. In the interim, we'll have vendors, performers, and food trucks. We have an extraordinary selection of vendors this year with things you've never seen before. We have boutiques. We have high-end fashion. We have handcrafted jewelry and such. The emphasis is not so much for sales, as we'd like to offer the community what's available in our small business community, which is the backbone of our economy. So you'll see people you recognize. Councilwoman from Vine Grove, Selena Hudson, Harden County Chamber of Commerce Award winner for Excellence in Governance, and Vine Grove hometown hero. We have Jeffrey Spencer, nationally known for his renowned barbecue sauce. And we have a whole host of other people. As you go through the vendors, each and every vendor you will know and you'll see are your neighbors, your friends, your coworkers, fellow parishioners. It's all local, which is our emphasis. One of the big highlights of the festival is our Taste of the World Food Court. This year, we're proud to introduce the flavors of Belize, Cuba, Germany, Italy, Jamaica, Mexico, and all-American classics. We also have our favorite lemonade stand. The Bobby Sanders family will be there. Many of you remember the first festival over at Ollie's. The two little kids are now teenagers working with the family. And the patriarch of the family, Bobby, he stands in the back, pushes a lemon, and he does that for five hours, squeezing lemons. And that's why this sleeve is longer than the other. And then we also have a coffee truck, Unbridled Ground Coffees, which is one of the premier coffee shops we have. We also have a German bakery coming, selling loaves of bread. And another outstanding feature of the vendors market, for the first time, we have invited all our friends from the farmer's market to stay for the day and give some exposure to what's available. I know the city of Radcliffe has been promoting the market in the last several months, and this will help. And in closing, my colleague Toshi Merle has put together a wonderful performance program. Back by popular demand, we have the Allegro Dance Academy. We also have Oraya, which is the Oriental and Arabesque dancing. And then we also have Echo Through, which is a family band. And did I miss anybody?
Fire dancer and a DJ.
Oh, and then we also have an incredible fire dancer. Everybody loves the fire dancer. And then Councilwoman Maria Bell is going to surprise us with an impromptu invitation of everybody to dance to Zorba the Greek, correct?
Yes, yes.
So this is our 7th year. It's going to be an outstanding program. Please come this Saturday, 4:00 to 9:00, here on City Hall grounds. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you did that with no notes?
No notes.
No notes, Pete.
And on a closing note, on a closing note, I'd like to recognize Senator Joe Prather, who I served as a page 50 years ago.
I'm sure he appreciates that.
All right, thank you, Pete. Anybody else? Come on up, sir. Yes, sir. Just state your name, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to leave work early today.
You're welcome, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mr. Jim Bradford. I'm the deputy to the Garrison Commander here at Fort Knox. I want to take the opportunity to speak on behalf of Fort Knox, knowing that you all have a zoning adjustment change invoked this afternoon. I'll make my comments brief. I do want to take the opportunity to address some comments that have been made on the public record concerning this zoning adjustment and the recent discussions. First, Fort Knox is not against additional housing. We acknowledge the need for affordable housing and housing development specifically within 30 minutes of Fort Knox. However, where that housing is located affects the readiness of our active Reserve and National Guard units that train at Fort Knox. Fort Knox acknowledges the private property rights of owners. Our goal is to work with city and county leaders toward the zoning classification of that property to ensure our civic leaders understand the economic, safety, and quality of life impacts these zoning changes have toward Fort Knox and the persons living near the installation. As we expand outward from the installation, Fort Knox wants to participate in legislative discussions to ensure flight patterns and noise and light patterns are understood by our elected leaders. We do this because we want to reduce the civil and residential concerns we've seen repeatedly across our DoD footprints in the aftermath of these decisions. In comments made on the record, it has been articulated that Fort Knox is okay with the proposed zoning change if the city approves our request for security fencing and downward-facing lighting. I must clearly state again that Fort Knox is not in favor of zoning change and the incremental encroachment that impacts readiness to our army. What our letter of concern states and urges is that if the city does approve it, then at a minimum impose certain conditions on the builder. Our letter of concern nor of our public comments in any way stated Fort Knox is okay with a rezoning request. It has been stated in the record that Fort Knox's compatibility use plan is non-binding. That is true by legal definition. The compatibility use plan is agreed upon plan in partnership with Harden, Mead, and Bullock Counties and their municipalities, along with state leaders and agencies, to work together to implement procedural, regulatory, and legal changes to protect the buffer area around Fort Knox through participation in the parliamentary process, partnership, revision of comprehensive plans and regulation, and education. The compatibility use plan is not a desire by Fort Knox to stop development or alter the decision authority of a county or municipality. It is an agreed partnership to protect the 5.6 billion in revenue that Fort Knox provides yearly into our communities and ensures readiness for our army is not impacted. Fort Knox was not aware of the original zoning request that began this development. We cannot go back in time, but our purpose going forward is to highlight the risk of future growth in that area. In our letter we provided in July, it states the risk to residents if the zoning change is implemented. The risk remains even if the city directs the developer to provide security fencing and downward lighting. Fort Knox will still allow recreational hunting in the area. Fort Knox will still allow the use of smoke and incendiary grenade devices to be used for training. Smoke from a smoke grenade is affected by wind. Not all hunters operate their firearms safely. There is a risk. While our overall objective is to promote agricultural and environmental easements, commercial enterprises, as this land is currently zoned, does not operate late at night and on major holidays. Commercial businesses do not have children woken up at night or impacts a backyard barbecue on the weekend. We acknowledge these are hard decisions, but Fort Knox must do our due diligence in maintaining a public record toward the future if and when requests to curtail operations on Fort Knox occur. Unfortunately, while there is a belief that everyone understands the impact of living near a military installation, the reality is more residents are moving here without any affiliation of the armed forces or the history of Fort Knox. As we are seeing in Bullock County now, residents do take civil action in court that can change how we operate and train when it impacts their perceived quality of life and property values. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bradford.
All right, anybody else? Can you please state your name?
My name is Andrelette Jackson. I had given you all each our letters and ads from yes, last week, but I just wanted to give the NAACP is having their 34th Annual Freedom Fund banquet on November the 1st, 2025 at 6:00 PM, and it would be at Sabre and Quill at Fort Knox. The tickets are $75 each. Our keynote speaker would be Dr. Gerald L. Smith, which he is the professor of history and African-American study at the University of Kentucky. He is an excellent speaker. He's also the pastor of Piggerin Baptist Church in Lexington, Kentucky. So if anyone would like to purchase tickets, you can give a call to myself, First Vice President of the Harden County NAACP, at 270-317-3827. And we would like for you all to participate with us this year as we celebrate our 34th Annual. And I will pass this around. Y'all can sit down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody? Before I move on. All right, okay, we'll close that and go to informational. Ashley, do we have anything on the informational? Do we have anything? All right, I guess we will move on then to new business. Mr. Pike, number one on the agenda is a second reading of the amending chapter 7.5 flood prevention.
Yes, sir. This is the ordinance amending chapter 7.5 flood damage prevention in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Radcliffe, Kentucky. Whereas the city council and the City of Radcliffe, Kentucky have previously established a flood damage prevention ordinance within the city of Radcliffe, and whereas all ordinances and part of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict only are hereby repealed, and whereas this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption, readoption, and publication as required by law, now therefore beordained by the City of Radcliffe City Council that the flood damage prevention ordinance for the city of Radcliffe be amended as follows. Article 2, definition 7.5-5, definition substantial improvement. Any reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition, or other improvement of a structure taking place during a five-year period in which the cumulative percentage of improvements equals or exceeds 50% of the market value of the structure before the start of construction of the improvement. This term includes structures which have incurred substantial damage regardless of the actual repair work performed. The term does not, however, include either. One, any project for improvement of a structure to correct existing violations of state or local health, sanitary, or safety code specifications which have been identified by the local code enforcement official and which are the minimum necessary to assure safe living conditions. Or two, any alteration of a historic structure, provided that the alteration will not include the, excuse me, preclude the structure's continued designation as a historic structure. The remainder of section 7.5-5 shall remain unchanged. Should any section, clause, line, paragraph, or part of this ordinance be held unconstitutional or invalid for any reason, same shall not affect the remainder of this ordinance. That's second reading. Mayor ready for motion to adopt.
Motion. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none. We have a roll call. Vote, please.
Yes, sir.
Bell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Deroche?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is a, number two, is a second reading of ordinance amending the city of Radcliffe's annual budget for 2425.
This is the ordinance amending the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of the city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council has reviewed such budget proposals may necessary modifications, now therefore beordained by the city council of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, section one, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, is hereby amended as follows. Under anticipated revenues, insurance premium taxes under general fund is amended to read $3,978,500. Intergovernmental revenues under stormwater utility fund are amended to read $85,000. Total resources available under general fund are amended to read $16,485,600, and under stormwater utility fund to read $1,419,000. On the appropriations side, the administration department is amended to read under general fund $1,402,400. Economic Development Planning and Building Department under general fund is amended to read $569,900. Stormwater Utility is amended under Stormwater Utility Fund to read $1,084,000. Total appropriations under general fund are amended to read $16,485,600, and under Stormwater Utility Fund to read $1,419,000. That is the second reading. Ready for motion to adopt.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Second. Any discussion? Is there an annual amendment? Chance, you got anything to add?
I think we talked about it recently.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? If not, we have a roll call. Vote, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Deroche?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Fox, if you will, you got number six. You got to stay here for it. Don't scoot out on me yet. All right, number three. Mr. Pike, this is second reading of ordinance rezoning the application property located at 238 Cedar Oak Drive, Vine Grove.
This is the summary of zoning ordinance rezoning property located at 238 Cedar Oak Drive, Vine Grove, Kentucky, part of Arlington Center Lot 3, PVA map number 138-20-07-003, from C-zone to R4-zone, 26.307 acres. The city of Radcliffe Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on its own map amendment request on August 7, 2025, made by applicant owner Silvergate Properties LLC for 26.307 acres of property located on the west side of Veterans Memorial Parkway, US Highway 361, approximately 2.8 miles north of its intersection with Kentucky 313 at 238 Cedar Oak Drive, Vine Grove, Kentucky, part of Arlington Center Lot 3, PVA map number 138-20-07-003, CD book office, excuse me, CD book 1182, page 769, Office of the Harden County Clerk. The request was for an amendment from commercial zone to residential for high-density, single-family, and duplex zone. The planning commission recommended the zone map amendment request be granted. As the request was supported by the evidence of record, the city's comprehensive zoning plan and applicable law, and the city council is now enacting an ordinance to change property zoning, please find the full ordinance on the website www.radcliffe.org, or by contacting the city clerk at ashley.russo@radcliffeky.gov by email. That is the second reading. Mayor ready for motion to adopt.
We have a motion.
Motion to accept.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. As you well know, I owned a business in Radcliffe for 40 years. It's 2025. Most of you probably won't remember 30 years ago, when the first, when it was first announced, base realignment and closure, and we went through several steps of Fort Knox being threatened, threatened with closure. One man stood up and fought for Fort Knox. That man was Senator Joe Prather. The countless hours, the countless people, the countless trips, everything he involved in Harden County and in Kentucky. He used all his friends. He called everybody, everyone in Frankfurt. He went to Washington DC on many, many occasions. This man led the fight to protect Fort Knox. Now, as we give him the possibility of owning property adjacent to Fort Knox, I know that he will always step forward and do the right thing for Radcliffe and for Fort Knox. I have every belief that this is a good zoning improvement, and I will vote for it as I am tonight. And I ask you to do the same thing. I know this man. I know his heart. We'll always get the right thing for Mr. Joe Prather.
Mrs. Hill Street, right? This is Hill Street. This is not the one we're referring to.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this is Hill Street. And I agree, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, sir.
I agree that Mr. Prather has served our community well, and he has fought for Fort Knox. And Mr. Turner, the developments that he has done throughout this city, that's not what is turning my stomach right now. Not what he has done and what he would do. And I believe wholeheartedly that they're going to protect the community and protect the citizens. Personally, for me, and it's not personal to your tenure and everything that you've done for the community, we have two options, my understanding, from the work session, is we either have a new hearing so that we could hear our own evidence, because we are limited to what we have here. I don't think for me, in good conscience, I can approve, especially after just now hearing Mr. Bradford, and he's not allowed to introduce new evidence. I worry about the safety. I'm in real estate. I've been in real estate for 30 years. I am a voice for new homes, a voice for growing our community. I don't know if I, because I don't understand this completely, so I'm not so sure I can consider new homes over safety. I would like to see if there's a compromise, and I maybe I'm hearing a little bit of what Mr. Bradford was saying, that there's a compromise. There's not just lights, not just a fence. So I don't know what the answer is. I can't just approve it without, I guess my recommendation would be, and I don't even know if this is the right format or way to do it. Mr. Pike will interject and correct me. I think we should have a new hearing. And I know that's not normal. Sometimes things that we do up here, that we're sitting up here, this is a new, a new venture, and maybe this isn't normal. I've not, in four and a half years, three terms, sat in a hearing. And you all have done a lot of improvements. You've built a lot. You have a lot to offer, and you've been offering to this community. But this is one zone change that might, I think, needs more consideration. And that is my comment, Mayor.
Anybody else have comments before we?
I do.
Yep.
Considering everything that we've seen and heard so far, I can't see where we can legally disapprove. And I've spent time on a zoning board, 10 years, and I think they've covered everything pretty well. And I think we have a good zoning board. That's my opinion.
Ms. Bell, if you're going to say something, just pull your mic down.
I am concerned about the safety a lot. You don't want to live in a house in fear that there would be smoke coming from the other side, or training, or noises. A lot of times, we hear the boom, and we don't know, and the whole Facebook is full of, you know what happened? You know what happened? You know what happened? So imagine if you live near. I agree with Councilwoman Toshi Merle, we should go further into this, have a hearing, and in fact, know what is going to happen on the other side, or is it vague? If it's vague, and Fort Knox is preparing us for that, something that we don't know, then we have to discuss again. That's my opinion.
Pam, are you going to say anything before I jump in?
I'm tending to agree with Councilwoman Merle. I'd like to understand a little bit better. I mean, we have two awesome partners here that, that we want to make sure we're doing the right thing by our community and both partners that are involved in this situation. So I would personally like to understand better the full impact on both sides.
So I know Mr. Pike's going to speak here in a second, but just remember, on the, on the motion on the floor is a motion for approval. That's what you all have motioned and voting on. We have to, and Mr. Pike will probably clarify this here in a second, how we have to go about that. Just remember, and it's, it's on the, we have a comp plan, and when you find finding of fact, it has to be based on not feeling, but what the finding of fact is.
Fact.
And if we do open that back up to a new hearing, and that is what the council votes on, remember that the finding of fact has to be something that is in form with the comp plan. And that's what the planning commission, what Kim alluded to. So there are legal steps. And Mr. Pike, I'll let you add to that.
So, yeah, that's, that's a very quick summary there, Mayor. It's more complicated than that. It's because the, the plan, even if it's not in agreement with the comp plan, the proposed rezoning can still be approved if other factors are met legally. So here's what you got procedurally right now. You have a motion on the floor to adopt with a second, and you're in the discussion period. Ms. Merle has asked for a public hearing. So I think what you would have to do is a motion to postpone the pending motion, to postpone this motion to the city council meeting immediately following a new public hearing date to be determined and advertised per law.
We have to have a, yeah, we have to have a.
Because it has to be advertised. The property has to be posted again. Applicant has to be notified. Property owners, adjacent property owners have to be notified yet again. So I think that's what you'd have to, so you'd have to vote on, are you going to postpone this motion and ask for a new hearing? That's the first motion, if someone were to make that motion. I think procedurally, that's how you have to do it.
So we have to have a motion to postpone?
To postpone the.
The existing motion on the floor.
The motion on the floor, which is to adopt the planning commission recommending, recommendation for rezoning, to postpone that motion to the next council meeting immediately following whenever the public hearing can be scheduled.
I will make the motion to postpone this second reading until we can have new notice of a public hearing. Then we would bring this back up at the first regular meeting of the city council.
I second.
Now we have that motion and a second.
Yes.
Any discussions? Hearing none. Ms. Russo?
Mr. Pike, before she does that.
Does everyone understand what the pending motion is? Does anybody have any questions on what yes means and what no means on the vote?
How does that?
Well, this, I mean, it's, this covers item three, which is 238 Cedar Oak Drive. It doesn't cover item four.
Got you.
That's, that's a separate motion and separate ordinance. And so this is for item three, 238 Cedar Oak Drive. Does everybody understand what a yes vote on this motion to postpone means and what a no vote means?
Well, I'd like clarification. So if I say yes, that means we are postponing.
You're voting to postpone the motion and have a public hearing?
Yes.
Another public hearing, a second public hearing. And if you vote no on this motion to postpone, it's that you don't want to postpone it and don't want the public hearing so that you can move on to the motion on the floor, which is to adopt the rezoning.
I would like to make one further comment to Mr. Thompson's statement. I have no doubt that we have a great code enforcement board. This is in no way too slight their recommendation. And I understand there's legalities.
Planning.
The planning, the planning and zoning.
Ms. Thompson.
Oh, planning and zoning. So if this is really for. So if this is really for a better understanding, as, as Mr. Roach said, it's not to slight anyone, our senator, Mr. Turner, Fort Knox, anyone. This is, I feel, something that we need to get better clarification on.
Anybody else for call for vote? Ms. Russo.
Yes, sir. Drosh?
Yes.
Murrell?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Bell?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
So three, two. So we will postpone that. And then that item will be, we will, Murray will have to get with you, and then we'll resend that and get the information back out to you guys. Uh, number four. Second reading, Mr. Pike.
Does anybody want to make a motion to postpone this one before I read this one?
I'll make that motion to save time.
Nostradamus. So your motion is to postpone item number four, have another public hearing, and then consider the second reading of this ordinance at the council meeting immediately next following that public hearing, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Off Hill Street?
Let's, 2787 Hill Street. The request from RH and R2 to R2. The question is, does that adjoin Fort Knox property, Murray, item number four? Which is 2787 Hill Street, RH and R2 to R2. So it does not adjoin Fort Knox property?
No.
You want to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw that one.
So then we'll just have a second reading.
So, all right.
That was just a second reading.
It's a summary of zoning ordinance, rezoning property located at 2787 Hill Street, Vine Grove, Kentucky, PVA map number 139-00-00-002 from RH and R2 zones to R2 zone, 38.760 acres. The City Radcliffe Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on a zone map amendment request on August 7, 2025, made by applicant owner Sandra G. Turner and Glenn S. Turner for 38.760 acres of property, located on the east side of Hill Street, approximately 0.6 miles north of its intersection with West Lincoln Trail Boulevard at 2787 Hill Street, Vine Grove, Kentucky, PVA number 139-00-00-002, C.D. Book 1581, page 1595, Office of the Hardin County Clerk. The request was for an amendment from residential holding zone and residential two zone, low-density, single-family residential zone to residential two, low-density, single-family residential zone. The planning commission recommended the zone map amendment request be granted as the request was supported by the evidence of record, the city's comprehensive zoning plan, and applicable law. And the city council is now enacting an ordinance to change the property zoning. Please find the full ordinance on the website, www.radcliffe.org, or by contacting the city clerk at ashley.russo@radcliffeky.gov by email. That's second reading, Mayor.
You have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Go roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Drosh?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, Mr. Pike, second reading of the animal confinement in vehicles.
This is summary of an ordinance of the City of Radcliffe, Kentucky, regarding animal confinement in motor vehicles. The City of Radcliffe is enacting an ordinance making it unlawful to leave or confine an animal in any unattended motor vehicle under conditions that endanger the health or well-being of that animal. A first responder is authorized to take all steps that are reasonably necessary for the removal of an animal from a motor vehicle, including breaking into the motor vehicle if the officer has probable cause and if certain conditions are met. Section D, any person violating this section shall be guilty of a Class B misdemeanor, and upon conviction of such offense shall be punished by a fine not less than $5, no more than $250, or imprisoned for a period not less than five days, but not to exceed 90 days or both. Please find the full ordinance on the website, www.radcliffe.org, or by contacting the city clerk at ashley.russo@radcliffeky.gov by email. That's second reading, Mayor.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Drosh?
Yes.
Murrell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is a, I just need an introduction for the first reading of the ordinance levying the city ad valorem taxes.
I'll make an introduction.
This is the first reading of an ordinance levying City of Radcliffe ad valorem taxes for general municipal purposes for the fiscal year 2026 on all taxable property within the taxing jurisdiction of the city. On each $100 of calendar year 2025, assessed valuation is follows: On real property, .129, and personal property, .174, including real and personal property of public service companies. On privately owned and registered vehicles and watercraft, .199, and bank deposit tax, .00025. Be it ordained by the City of Radcliffe as follows: Section 1, for the purposes of support of the government of the City of Radcliffe and the payment of its debts and expenses for the fiscal year 2026, there will be, and hereby are levied, ad valorem taxes on each $100 of calendar year 2025 assessed valuation of all taxable property within the taxing jurisdiction of the city as follows: A, real property and personal property. Personal property includes inventory, furniture, and fixtures of a business, including inventory held for resale, including real and personal property of public service companies on the Department of Revenue assessed valuation. Real property, .129. Personal property, .174. Bank deposit tax, .00025. B, privately owned registered vehicles and watercraft, not a part of inventory, shall be taxed at the rate of .199. Section 2, that this ordinance shall become effective on the date of its passage and publication as required by law. That's first reading, Mayor.
All right. And then Chance, I think you probably need to have a, possibly next week, a second reading before October.
Second reading, preferably, would be prior to next week. If at all possible. Is there any way to have it as soon as Thursday morning?
I'm available.
So I can check here. Nine, maybe if it works for everybody, or...
I will not be available. I've got conflicting things going on Thursday.
Maybe later than that.
Later than that.
I think there was, coming out of the work session, there was support, for the most part, I think, to introduce the grades as presented at night. So does that end up in form, or would that be, you know, if it were okay for the council? Or would that end up, have...
I'd probably be like, available later in the day, just not in the morning.
Yeah, Thursday afternoon, I can't. The, I'll have Ashley message you all. We'll try to get everybody, just know that Ashley's going to be messaging you. And it's just like we do last year. It's just the importance of getting that out because our, our tax paperwork starts going out, our property tax start going out October 1st. So we try to get them in as soon as possible. Okay, so I'll have Ashley just text you all some dates. All right, number seven. This is a, considering approval for the changes to the employee handbook. And that's going to be the section 3 dot 2 dot, section 3 dot 6 dot 2. And that's what we had postponed. And there was some more discussion regarding the police retirees and that language. And I think some of you all had the opportunity to discuss that with Chief a little bit more. And so that is back on the agenda. So if there is any issue, we just need a motion to approve. And then second, we can have discussion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Now we can have, is any discussion regarding that? Let's change that language. Chief, you got anything to add to that? Hearing none. Ms. Russo.
Bell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Drosh?
Yes.
Murrell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right. And number eight on the agenda, that is the consideration and approval of the department surplus. You all got that department list, or surplus list. I know it's pretty extensive. We did have some questions regarding how our sale goes. Usually, some of these items are auction items that we, you know, combine. We usually hire a local auctioneer. We sell those, just like we've had for many years. And then if there's anything that are big-ticket items, that are vehicles or such that we can get on govdeals.com, we usually post those. And that's where we usually get a little bit more money out of our equipment. So if there's no questions regarding that, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
You're fine.
Hearing none. Ms. Russo.
Brown?
Yes.
Drosh?
Yes.
Murrell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
All right. Last item on here, this is something that came up last week. As unfortunate as it is, I think we're going to have some light at the end of the tunnel. Unfortunately, of course, the news got out regarding the sale of Green River Waste and Dave's here. And we had a meeting last week. And I think Dave can attest to that a lot of us did not know that this was going to happen. But obviously it did. And we understand the circumstances in which it happened. But obviously, our side of it was just making sure. And Todd's here with Republic Services. And it was our side just to make sure that the contract and everything forward is going to be moving the same, that we're going to, the citizens obviously are going to be staying the same service. And most importantly, that the contract that Green River agreed to is going to be held up for the next four and a half years, and that they're going to obviously do their best to maintain and operate and live up to that agreement. And I think after our meeting, we were pretty, 42 states, I'm trying to remember, most of the cities and counties around us. And so we do believe, I was talking to the chief this morning, he has you over in, right where he lives, just across in Meade County, and said you're not bad, so.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, well, so we hope, you know, and can, you know, wish you the best of luck. We want to see good things happen here in our city regarding this franchise deal. I often joke that I didn't realize how important garbage was till I realized how important garbage was. And so, you know, we want to get through this process. But part of that process is the assignment and the transfer of that. And Mr. Pike, I don't know if you want to specify that language?
So our ordinance under Chapter 8 that deals with our solid waste collection franchise states that if the successful bidder, the franchisee, in other words, if they wish to sell their rights under the franchise that's been awarded and under the agreement that they've entered into with the city, they can do so. But it requires the approval of the city to do that. What's been explained to the city is that Republic Services of Kentucky LLC is purchasing substantially all of the assets of Green River Waste Incorporated. So basically, they're buying, either buying Green River's substantial assets, they're buying their stock. It's a little unclear as to what's going on. But except that Republic wants to take over and step in the shoes of Green River for the franchise. And the franchise currently expires December 31 of 2029. It was a five-year franchise that you guys granted. So 2029, at the end of the year is when it expires. Republic has asked to step into the shoes of Green River and literally take over the contract at the same rates, the same level of service. They're just literally pinch hitting and taking the place of Green River. That's, that's what they've asked to do. So here are your options, okay? Option one, and this, I believe, is the mayor's recommendation, is to approve the assignment because Republic knows what they're getting into, and they've agreed to take it over. And if Green River is selling out, then Green River won't be around to carry on service any longer. Republic also, by the way, they are supposed to and have, in fact, delivered a $100,000 surety bond guaranteeing their performance under the franchise. So I think what the mayor would recommend is that you approve the assignment because you have Republic at Green River prices. Not to put too fine a point on it, but that's what you've got. You've got them locked in for five years. And Republic knows that and has agreed to that. If Republic didn't want to do that, I guess we wouldn't be here. So they've asked to basically take it over. You could deny that. But then what's going to happen is you're going to have Green River that's going out of business, most likely. You could open it back up for a new franchise bid, but I don't think you want to do that. We just went through all that. And I know the mayor doesn't recommend that you do that. The other is to deny the assignment, revoke the franchise of Green River, and open up solid waste collection to the world. Meaning that customers would be responsible for obtaining their own residential or commercial trash service with whichever companies got a franchise from the City of Radcliffe. And that would mean anybody could come forward and ask for a franchise. And basically, it would be a non-exclusive franchise, and we would award that to any company that was qualified. So you might have five, six, seven, eight, 10 franchisees for solid waste. I don't think the mayor wants that either. And I don't know that this council wants that.
And just to point out too, it wasn't just ours that Green River. It is Mount Washington, it's Bowling Green. It's, it's all services that Green River provided.
Green River is going away. So that's, that's what's been told to us. Republic is buying them out, so taking over their responsibilities.
So basically, in, in our discussion, the, the, one of the main things, I think, I, I read is that everything stays the same. Garbage cans stay the same. They'll remain green. You broke your lid, and you call Republic for a new can, then you'll get a blue can. So basically, every, there is no change, hopefully, to the customer. The only change they may see is a new contact person and a positive billing.
Billing address.
And the billing would be the other two. And so Todd will be our point of contact for us. And then there'll be your, your local services. Now, I know some of the council had questions regarding the office, and that's something that we're working through. You know, they're a different style company in call centers, apps, and online payments and stuff like that's much different than local.
It's the way of the future.
And so they're a big company, they understand that. And we're going through those discussions still in regarding to how the local office factors in over this next period. So that's not something we can have an answer for now. But for the next 60 days, it will still remain and operate, so.
And I, I don't know if anyone's addressed this from your standpoint or from Republic's standpoint, because what I'm, I'm seeing and hearing a lot is, is my trash pickup day going to stay the same? Are you all addressing that? Because that's a big concern for people, what day their trash is going to be picked up. Are you can, are you addressing that on a website page or through a letter?
They're not changing anything.
Not changing dates, pickup times, pickup dates?
Can I have six months down the road with routing or anything? You know, we might find something where we can be more efficient. I don't know, something different.
You're saying until the transition, days are the same, everything's the same. Once the transition takes place, then they should be notified if something changes.
I have something to ask. The green, the Green River beans will be continuing, although there is not going to be Green River until the new ones come. And it will be the same day as Councilwoman Murrell said.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
We bought everything?
Yes.
Haters, dumpsters. So we're going to utilize those. And then once they break, need replacement, we'll replace them with our blue containers.
I don't want the people to get confused that, don't take the bean out.
They'll have to do that transition again.
Okay.
As the mayor and council will remember, I was really happy when Green River opted to come into Radcliffe and offer, and offer their services. A small company out of Kentucky. I was so happy about that because I wanted my, my dollars going to my company in Kentucky and staying here. I'm not against big guys. But what I've found is, the big guys don't provide the service. They put you on hold, and they keep you on hold if they ever do return a phone call. One of the things that sold me on Green River was having an office in town so that citizens could go in, make the payment, file a complaint, talk to somebody. And I hope that Republic will continue doing that. Having, having that local office means everything, I think, to the local residents. I do wish luck to Green River and whatever the future holds. And I look forward to working a seamless transition with Republic. So let's get it done.
If I may, Mayor?
Yep.
Mr. Brown, I completely understand where you're coming from with the office. If I had to make the decision right now, I would say there's no way to answer us about it. It stays for at least the length of this contract, right?
Yes, sir.[1727.55]
of work. I mean, I've been more active in that in the past than this year, and it is a lot of work to pull off an event like that. So, thank you, Pete, and Ms. Jackson.
Anything? Tosh?
I just echo their sentiments, and I look forward to Saturday, and let's come out and have a great festival. Thank you, Mr. Countryman. The parade is at five, and Mr. Roach can talk about, I mean, Ms. Ashley, the lineup, she didn't even notice I said that. The lineup, and if there's still time for entries, I'm not sure, Ms. Ashley, I'll let you discuss that. I'm just looking forward to Saturday.
Kim?
I agree with the rest of the council, and their efforts were really great, and I think this is going to be a fun time, and I don't have to work that weekend, so I'm here.
Glad you and Ashley coordinated.
So the parade's at five from South Deepwood to City Hall.
Yeah, parades, so the Radcliffe Day Parade is happening this Saturday as well. It's our five o'clock parade. We do ours, we've been changing ours to do ours in the evening. It is leaving, you can line up on State Street at the Methodist Church, it comes down Deepwood, and it comes all the way down to Freedom's Way. It's a shorter parade, but it's, it does its job. It gets everybody in there, kids get candy. We do throw candy, and we still are accepting entries. We don't have numbered entries because we've done that in the past, and when people get there late and they try to drive through everybody, and they try to back their float in, it just becomes a big cluster of people trying not to get hit. And so ours is first come, first served. The dignitaries have an area to line up. Other than that, as you approach, you just line up and you get behind the next, the next person. And so if you still, we still are looking for participants. If anybody wants to participate, two-seven-zero-three-five-one-four-zero-seven-nine, they'll get you back at Calvin, and they can help assist with that, and Ms. Russo up here at City Hall can help as well. Is there anything else, Ashley, you can think of?
We do have two special co-grand marshals this year.
Oh, yes, you do, yeah.
One is a local boy who is fighting cancer, and another is a local child who is, has a very, very rare disease, and so they are going to be our co-grand marshals this year, so come out and support them, bring your kids, get plenty of candy, because we do throw candy, so.
And the last dance of summer.
Yes, we're going to have a DJ and all kinds of good stuff on the float.
Yeah, roads are blocked off, everything we blocked off is passed, so looking forward to it. All right, with that, next council work session, we will notify you all, just be prepared for that public hearing when we set that date, so everybody needs to be in attendance for that. It is a priority, so make sure you are in attendance for that. Ashley will get those dates, working alongside with Murray and the applicant to make sure they can be here. Next work session's October fourteenth at five PM, and the next council meeting will be October twenty-first. Almost over, twenty-twenty-five, it's almost gone, so. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.